This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
All right, the appointed hour 6:30 having been reached, I welcome everybody to this meeting of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals. My name's Steve Judge, and as Chair of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals, I call this meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the Town of Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking on a link on the town's webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48 and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaws, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the regular members of the ZBA who will be impaneled for consideration of the comprehensive permit. I'm Steve Judge, the Chair. I'm present. Mr. Langsdale?
Present.
Ms. Omira?
Present.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Present.
And the associate ZBA members, Ms. Waldman? Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Greeney?
Here.
Mr. Meadows? Mr. Meadows, speak up. Are you here? You were there?
Yes.
Great. Also in attendance is Maureen Pollock, Maureen Pollock, Planner, Christine Bresta, Planning Director, Rob Mora, Building Commissioner, Nate Malloy, Planner, John Whitton and Barbara Huggins Carboni of the KP Law Firm, who are assisting the board in this matter. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Amherst. All hearings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and is evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. The subject of tonight's public hearing is ZBA 2020-39, a request by Valley Community Development Corporation for a comprehensive permit to construct a multifamily building containing 28 units at 132 North Hampton Road, Amherst. This is the second in a series of public meetings and public hearings and public meetings to be held on this request for a comprehensive permit. The focus of tonight's public hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the application. There was not time at the first meeting to permit public comment, and I want to give ample time for public comment on this matter. Tonight's agenda is as follows. First, submittals. We'll note submittals received by the board since our last meeting from June 25th, from the applicants, town boards, and committees, as well as the public. We'll have public comments. The board will receive public comment on requests for the comprehensive permit. The applicant may respond to the comment to the extent time permits. The applicant may respond to public comments submitted for the record or public comments presented tonight. And if time allows, the applicant will present responses to the ZBA's requests and questions from our last meeting on June 25th. ZBA members will discuss the applicant's responses, and we will compile a list of questions and requests for the applicant to provide for the next public hearing. At the end of the hearing, we will move to continue the public hearing to a date certain, and the board will entertain public comments on any matter that is not subject of tonight's public hearing. Tonight, about halfway through the hearing, we will take a five-minute break. I found that it's probably better just to give everybody a chance to get up, move around, and go get a drink of water, and then come back, but just to give a break to everybody at about 8 o'clock, quarter to eight. I also tonight want to review the ways in which, that in addition to these public meetings, the public can be informed and comment on this application. Copies of all submissions can be found on the dedicated project page on the town website. If residents wish to be notified of any additional information recorded by the town concerning this application, they can use the notify me feature on the 132 North Hampton page of the town website. Public comment can also be submitted on the town website or email to Maureen Pollock, planner@pollock@amherstma.gov. This meeting will be broadcast on Amherst Media and may be viewed on Comcast Channel 17 and may be streamed on the Amherst Media website. In addition, this meeting will be uploaded, will be recorded, and uploaded to the Town of Amherst YouTube channel, and will be uploaded to the dedicated project page on the town website. Tonight, the board is holding a public hearing on ZBA 2020-39, Valley Community Development Corporation, 132 North Hampton Road, requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a new two-and-a-half-story residential multifamily building containing 28 small studio apartments and related common areas on an approximate 0.88-acre property located at 132 North Hampton Road, MAP 14C Parcel 8, general residence and educational zoning districts. Before we begin, are there any disclosures? If not, I want to remind the applicants, the board members, to seek recognition from the Chair to speak. You can do that by using the raise your hand feature on Zoom. When recognized, unmute yourself. When you have finished, please place yourself back on mute. We have received the following submissions from the applicants since our last meeting. In response to our questions, we received an updated planting plan or a response to a request for an updated planting plan, response to a request for the eight-foot a drawing of the eight-foot fence along the northeasternly property line. We've received detail for a bike storage shed. We've received photometric plans and cut sheets for exterior light fixtures. We've received a description of the supported services plan as well as a reference to the full supported services plan, which was enclosed, which was attached to an earlier filing to the town council. We've received an estimate of the distance from buildings to buildings. We've received a description of snow removal policies. We've received the parking management plan, photos of similar low-income projects in other areas. We've received answers to several questions on the heating and cooling systems and the electrical systems of the proposed building. We've received a response to a question regarding the trees along the alleyway separating the property. We've also received response to a question regarding the proposed budget and finances of the proposed plan. The town staff has also asked questions regarding construction, the site plans, and photographs, and some section of that elevations. We've received response to that, though at times the applicant was not able to provide those. We've received a description of the storage in each unit and the types of jobs at various income levels in the town. And we've received a definition, I think, of students as well. Is there anything else, Maureen, that I forgot in terms of submissions from the applicant? That's it, isn't it?
I think that that's what covers it, yes.
Yep, that's complete. And we've received no new submissions from town boards or other government bodies.
Correct.
We have received 10 comments as of noon today, 10 comments from the public, and those are available on the county website as well. So the public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, present your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. Instructions for how to be recognized to speak will be on the screen for your information. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If you wish to make a statement in addition to your three-minute statement tonight, please note that you can submit written comments for the record. Those written comments are reviewed by board members and by staff. And there are also additional hearings on this matter, and there will be an opportunity for public comment at many of those hearings as well. We are trying to schedule additional public hearings on this meeting, and those will be noticed when we get that done. So this is the time for public comment. Maureen, do we have people in the participants who wish to comment?
Yes, so I'm going to that now. We have four raised hands, so let me, five, okay. I'll go to the first one, which is Lev Ben-Ezra. Sorry if I mispronounce anyone's name. I'm going to allow you to talk, so if you could state your name and your address. Hello? Can you hear us? I have unmuted you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm Lev Ben Ezra. I am the Executive Director of the Amherst Survival Center, and so I am speaking on behalf of the center, which is located at 138 Sunderland Road in North Amherst. I am not a resident of Amherst myself.
Okay.
Great. So thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this issue, and I'm glad to see members of our community continuing this discussion around affordable housing. And as the Executive Director of the Amherst Survival Center, I would like to express my strong support on behalf of the center for the development of additional affordable housing in our community. Our support for this specific affordable housing project is based on three key points: the need, the opportunity, and the reward. So I think that where we all agree is the need. We know that there is a really critical need for affordable housing. This affordable housing shortage exists nationwide, and unfortunately, is even worse in Western Massachusetts than the state as a whole. And one of the issues that the pandemic has put so starkly into view is that as all of us were asked to stay home, to rely solely on our immediate family unit, on our own home, on our own savings for those who needed to stay home from work and weren't paid, that it really put into such stark contrast the distinctions there between those who had access to sufficient housing and those who don't. The fear for so many as we come up to this end and the moratorium on evictions is a testament to the need for more affordable housing, that people aren't at risk of losing with this. We know that the median wages locally are not sufficient to afford housing. Wages for cashiers, nursing assistants, or teacher aides are half of what would be required for a single-wage earner to afford a studio or a one-bedroom. Supervisors, even in retail, or a full-time tractor-trailer driver still don't meet that threshold. So there is a need for zoning boards in various communities to evaluate then how to site and how to appropriately zone these residential buildings. And that creates a really unique opportunity, that here we are. We're lucky to live in a community where we see this need for affordable housing, and we're lucky to be at a time when we have the resources to help connect the dots. We have a site ready for the project. We have a community organization with a long track record of success managing affordable housing developments. We have funding that is set aside, and we have a community of people who care, are engaged, and have the ability to see this through in an effective manner. And we have the opportunity for the zoning board to move forward, to allow this project to take place. So my last point before I'll yield the floor is just for us all to really consider the reward. A key role of the zoning board, of course, is to think about how to use the physical land that exists throughout the community to most effectively build a thriving community that supports all of the different components: residential life, business life, et cetera, in a way that supports a thriving community. And we know that affordable housing is the foundation upon which a stable and thriving life can be built, that without stable and safe housing, people must focus all of their energy, intelligence, their bandwidth, on this most fundamental need. And so this affordable housing is a key factor in maintaining food security. It is a critical opportunity to focus on, or it's a critical way for us to support our community's public safety. It benefits our schools. It benefits our local employers who are looking for great staff. And now, more than ever, we see how affordable housing really impacts the public health throughout our whole community. So I really believe that this project has great potential to benefit our community as a whole. Thank you so much, and that's what I had. Thanks for your consideration of this proposal.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Douglas Marshall. Okay, so state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Doug Marshall. I live at 64 Eames Avenue in Amherst. I'm calling in as a private citizen rather than my participation on another board in town. I simply wanted to express my support and be on the record that I think it's a great project, and it's a good place for it, and it's a good design, so I hope you guys will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next is Steve George. Is that right, Maureen?
Yes. Okay, Steve, if you could state your name and your address.
There we go. Now I should be, okay.
Yep.
Okay, my name is, okay, great. My name is Steve George. I live at 23 Dana Street. There's probably no Dana Street intersects with North Hampton Road near the project site. I appreciate what's being done by the developers so far to respond to neighbors' concerns, and the project, I think, is improved compared to what was initially described. However, there's one central feature of the proposal that remains problematic to me, and that's the fact that it packs a large number of only single occupancy units into the project site, rather than including a range of kinds of apartments. The number of dwelling units relative to the size of the lot, the so-called density of dwelling units, is far out of line with the normal zoning in the RG zone. How far out of line? Well, for apartments in RG on a 39,000-square-foot lot like 132 North Hampton Road, the maximum number of dwelling units is seven, not 28, as being requested. I know that the ZBA has unlimited authority to grant waivers in this situation, but extraordinary deviations from the bylaw should require substantial justification, and so far, I haven't heard such convincing justification. The report by town staff to the ZBA lists this waiver request, but doesn't state that it's a fourfold increase in density. Just says you need more square feet of the lot. That doesn't seem very relevant or helpful to the ZBA, since there's no way the ZBA can work with the developers to increase the size of the lot. What you can do is to work with the developers on the number of dwelling units, which I believe is too large. In the past, the developers have made arguments as to why this waiver shouldn't be considered extraordinary. They've said that some Amherst College dorms and an assisted living facility in the area are similar to what's being proposed. I disagree. I don't have time to discuss this within the time limits, but I wrote out why nothing in the project area is similar to a 28-unit apartment building, and my comments are in your materials. The developers also say that the allowed seven dwelling units could house as many people as 28 single occupancy units if the seven units were for families, so the impact on the neighborhood should be no different, but I disagree that the impact would be similar. In fact, including a family apartments in the facility would help it be better integrated into the neighborhood, which has mostly family residences, many with children. You could keep the basic building size and design, and the great plans for landscaping and planning, which I sure hope come to fruition, but specify that some apartments will be one- and two-bedroom rather than studio apartments. The developers have said such a facility is not financially feasible, but I understand that financial feasibility is part of your considerations. I respect the Valley CDC staff who worked on this project. And if they say a development with mixed types of apartments is not financially feasible, I know they believe it. However, I don't think the ZBA in this situation must or should accept such a claim without really verifying in a way that can be understood by people in the neighborhood, so we can really get ahead of this project. In both North Hampton and East Hampton, the Valley CDC has developed affordable housing projects that combine studio apartments with one-, two-, or three-bedroom units. Why is what is desirable and feasible in North Hampton and East Hampton not desirable and feasible in Amherst? The, oh yeah, at the ZBA meeting a week ago, a point was raised that seems to indicate that a facility with family apartments would be actually more financially feasible. The high cost of the project per square foot was explained by saying that each one-room unit must have all the facilities for plumbing, kitchen, and bathroom, presumably high voltage for stove and so on. But if there were family apartments, those rooms would not have to have that, so the cost would be lower. If you're inclined to approve this waiver, I hope the reasons for doing so will become clear in your discussion. I look forward to having this facility in our town. Thanks for listening to my comment.
Thank you, Mr. George. Ms. Lewis? Please state your name and address.
I'm just Carol Lewis. Can you hear me? I live at 21 Ward Street in Amherst.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I want to voice my strong support for this application and urge the board to approve it as submitted. And I will tell you some of my reasons, which I also have submitted to you before this. But anyway, it seems to me Lev Ben Ezra has done a beautiful job of explaining both the need and the benefits, and the town has recognized this need for years, and it's a housing production plan that was approved over five years ago. The need was recognized for this particular kind of housing, and the need since then has only increased. There's no other housing quite like it in town, which is, but there should be, this kind of housing. Single-room studio apartments for people who have limited income and maybe, and some of whom have been homeless, is something that is desperately needed. Secondly, I see Valley Community Development as just a very wonderful organization. They've been working on addressing this need for years. They have a strong track record, dedicated staff. In this instance, they've shown their responsiveness to the concern raised in many ways by residents and others. They've increased parking. They've increased the amount of time that staffing will be available on-site to help residents locate services should they choose to use those services. The location and the plan are appropriate, near shopping, near public transportation, near the town center. The area is already home to single and multifamily dwellings. There is a scheduled road improvement that will create sidewalks there. Additionally, to my mind, Valley CDC is planning on building this as a passive-energy-certified home building, thus helping Amherst decrease our energy footprint, at the same time providing environmental advantages to the project's residents. So it doesn't end up to be only rich people who get to live in housing that's appropriate for the climate conditions that we live in. That's a wonderful part of their proposal to me. And lastly, just any delays or changes won't only slow down the availability of housing that was needed yesterday, it will likely increase the costs. And for a project that already has a slim margin for financial viability, such increases could be seriously detrimental. And right now, the amount of money that the town has to put into this is not, I can't remember the percentage, but it's not a very large percentage of the total cost of the project. That's a great advantage to the town financially. Again, I just want to strongly urge your prompt approval of Amherst Studio Apartments Comprehensive Permit Application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. BGW next, Maureen?
Yes.
Please give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Barbara Graban Wilber. My address is 126 North Hampton Road, and I am an immediate butter. I am not voicing my negativeness about the proposal. I believe there is a need. My one concern that Leve mentioned was the community. I am concerned that this is for the community and not for folks that live outside the general Amherst-Tadley-Beltrop Town area. But what I would like to address is what took quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting, and that's the trees that border our property and 132. Those trees are extremely tall. They are right on the line, the property line. They are a menace. We have been here in this house since 1973. The trees have probably tripled, if not quadrupled, in size. The wind blows, the trees sway. I fear that they're going to fall on my house. So I would like you folks to reconsider the taking down of those trees. I have submitted additional comments to you in writing. I hope you have a chance to look at them. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, concerns that I might have about the density of what was once a one-family more than quadrupling. Not overnight, as I understand this is going to take probably another two to three years to complete. But thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Next.
Jay.
Jay?
Please state your name and your address. Can you hear us?
This is Jay Levy. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I'm with Elliott CHS Homeless Services, and I'm also a member of the Amherst community at 34 Blacktown Road, Amherst, Mass. What we do is outreach to folks without homes within, really, all throughout Western Massachusetts. And we've been engaged with a number of people who live within the Amherst area and certainly throughout Hampshire County, probably over 30 people that we've been working with who are chronically homeless and sorely in need of affordable housing options. I'm here really to bear witness to the great work that Valley CDC has done in the past and HMR Properties, that does the management. I've worked very closely with them around other projects, including Go West Out in North Hampton. One of the things we do is we not only work with the folks without homes, but we provide support services, transitionally helping people to get settled into their new homes and continue to work with community resources and connect people up to ongoing services that they may need to be stable in their housing. We've had great success working with Valley CDC and HMR Properties on their past projects, especially in the early part of the development. We've been involved in monthly meetings with HMR Property staff and Valley CDC personnel. We're able to review the clients that we've been able to connect into the housing and to talk about the support services that are needed and the work that's being done and attend to crises. And that's worked very, very, very well. So, you know, we really support, we know there's, we support this project. We know there's a great need for affordable housing. We feel that Valley CDC has done heroic work in the development that they've done. And in Amherst in particular, where I've worked with Craig's Doors, and I've worked with CHD, and I've worked with ServiceMed and other nonprofits to come together around organizing these support services. It's nice in Amherst to have something percolating and actually happening that's along the lines of permanent housing, and in this case, permanent housing would support. permanent housing and in this case, permanent housing with support services for the folks that are allowed in there, uh, that are homeless. Amherst has done a good job in terms of providing and supporting us in the outreach services that we do, and they've done great at supporting the shelter. But this add-on of, uh, affordable supportive housing is, is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Hornick. Okay, give your name and address, please.
My name is John Hornick. I'm a resident of Amherst. I live at 59 Carriage Lane in South Amherst. I am also the current Chair of the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. I sent in written comments on behalf of the housing trust, which are available to you. The housing trust, you vote, voted unanimously to support this project. What I want to do right now is to focus on two aspects of the project that are not part of my written comments. The first issue that's come up is public safety. Reading through, uh, the comments on this issue, I would say that there are several people who live in the vicinity of the proposed studio apartments have convinced themselves and some of their neighbors that the persons who will write, will reside in this building will pose a danger to others or to themselves. The evidence for this is very poor to nonexistent. People have suggested that drug and alcohol problems will be highly prevalent. There is no data that anyone can point to that supports this. Yet the group of people who are promoting this view have frightened themselves and others. One person is even convinced that she will need to buy a gun to protect herself and her family. They are now attempting to infect this zoning board with these scare tactics. If you approve this request and something, anything bad happens, it will be on your heads. Please don't let these emotional outbursts affect your judgment. Most town departments were invited to comment on the application for a comprehensive permit. That includes the Departments of Public Health and Public Safety. If there were actually serious danger in this project, we would have heard about it. The Public Health Director has a few comments intended to allay these fears. The Fire Department's comments are focused entirely on assuring that fire safety requirements will be met. And the Police Department did not even think it necessary to make any public comments. This is not a dangerous development. This is not a dangerous development, and I don't think you should allow anyone to persuade you that it is. The second aspect of the, uh, request that I wanted to focus on is the Plan for Social Services Support. Valley Community Development has gone beyond, uh, a social services plan for any similar building that I am familiar with. Most development of this type would only have plans for building maintenance and property management. These are present, but Valley has gone beyond this. There is a property management office planned for the building, but there is also a separate, uh, office for social support. They anticipated hiring, uh, an appropriately trained and schooled person to provide 70% of their time each week onsite to assure the availability of social services. Some of this will be the direct responsibility of this person. That is, they may, uh, do some counseling of individuals if that's necessary. They may help people get rides to other services. They arrange for people to provide services to come onsite and use their offices. They will be knowledgeable about other services that are available. For example, Jay Levy mentioned, um, Elliot Services. This person would work with residents or work with Elliot Homeless Services to assure that people who are homeless are properly settled in the building. They can arrange for substance abuse services.
John, can you, can you, um, give us a kind of a summation here?
Okay, uh, basically what I'm gonna say is if the residents have needs and are interested in receiving these kinds of services, Valley has set things up so that they will be accessible and, uh, just not onsite, but even offsite. And I think that's a very important contribution, um, which, as I said, I think is very unusual for studio apartment projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hornick. Uh, next, I think it's Jay. Can you identify yourself? Please unmute, identify yourself and give us your address.
Well, I, I think Jay or both.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, so it's Thomas.
Yep, Thomas, thank you, Maureen.
Okay. Uh, Thomas, can you, uh, I, um, I have clicked the button to allow you to speak, I think. Can you hear us? Thomas?
Thomas, I think you're still muted.
One second, disable, uh, it says, um, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, there we go.
I'm sorry. So, uh, my name is Tom Kegelman. I live at 649 East Pleasant, and I am a member of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, but I'm speaking here as, uh, as an individual resident. My wife and I operate a bed and breakfast there, and, uh, we had the wonderful pleasure of having five unrelated students move into a single family next door recently. I know that's not quite what's supposed to happen, but, um, it's not uncommon on our street to have lots of, um, young people, uh, living in, uh, single-family homes, and it's becoming more and more, uh, predominant in town. And it's just a part of the, um, crisis that, uh, we find in housing as people begin to squeeze into whatever available resources there are and find ways to, uh, accommodate, um, the growing, uh, inequality. The gap between what they can afford and what's available. And, um, many of these, uh, landowners, um, these landlords have, uh, skirted the laws and have, uh, done so, um, quietly and, uh, without any public, uh, discussion. Certainly not as much as we've seen here with, uh, Valley's, uh, proposal. And, uh, literally hundreds of such units are being created all the time around this town. And, um, in this one particular incident, with these relatively small number of units, a extremely, uh, competent, professional, reliable, just wonderfully resourced organization is coming forward with one of the most responsible plans that you could imagine. Amherst is indeed extremely lucky to have a group like this, um, involved in the town trying to help deal with what we have in town, which is a very serious, very extreme housing crisis that needs to be addressed as quickly and as expeditiously as possible. And I hope the ZB will move promptly to approve their application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kegelman.
Uh, next is Nate Buddington.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Nate Buddington. I live at 21 Sacco Drive in Amherst. Until Wednesday, yesterday, uh, I was, uh, Chair of the CPA Committee in Amherst, and I was on the CPA Committee when we unanimously and enthusiastically voted to, uh, send this proposal to Town Council for approval. And many of the people who've just spoken have said things that I was thinking of saying, but, but I do, I think it's important to mine a little bit this fear, I think, that people have about people who are single and people who need single resident occupancy housing. We have more and more single people in this society. We have a chronic issue with loneliness in this society. And this is a, a, a group of people that who are often overlooked in the affordable housing equation. And I think Valley CDC has really kind of brilliantly put together a, a, a wonderful facility in a good location, um, that I think is serving a population that we really need to spend more time talking about. And I'd say this is especially true of disabled people. I think when you look at the housing problems that we have in this country, uh, you can multiply it times 10 for disabled people who are often living by themselves. And these apartments are all, as I understand it, very close to being built, um, with universal design. They're gonna be very handicap friendly. And the last thing I want to say is, I, you know, this, this sense that people are bringing baggage, mental health problems, alcoholism, whatever, to this facility. These are the same kind of issues that we have in our neighborhoods, in our families, in our extended families, and we're able to manage them. And, uh, I don't see this as being much different than a neighborhood, other than the fact that we have a cluster of people living by themselves, but in close proximity to other people, which I think is a wonderful part of this project. I think this would be, uh, this is an amazing opportunity for Amherst, and I hope the ZB will recognize that and allow this to go forward as it's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buddington.
Next is Amy Gilbert Loines. Amy?
Can you hear us? Yes, can you hear me? Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Amy Gilbert Loines, and I live at 14 Orchard Street, and I am in a butter to this development. As in a butter, I am deeply invested in the success of this project. And, uh, tonight I would like to request a Section 53G Independent Review of Valley CDC's Proposal under Chapter 43 of Massachusetts General Laws. And I would also like to, um, request that the ZB start a pro forma process regarding financial details of the proposal. Uh, we were told that the ZB was the place to work out the details, and so I'd like to focus on the details. I think that some of the comments are getting a little bit broad, and we want to focus in on what this development will be, what services they'll provide. My specific concerns, which I outlined in a broader letter to the board, involve the density issue. What I consider a weak and unaccountable financial model and structure. A risk of unfair tenant selection process that, um, does not assure compliance with fair housing laws. And, uh, what I believe, I respectfully disagree with John Hornick from the Amherst Housing Trust, is a lack of a comprehensive service plan that meets the needs of potential residents and is under their, the responsibility of Valley CDC to provide its tenants. Tonight I'd like to focus on two areas in my limited time. I'm wary of Valley CDC's tenant selection process because, um, they are limiting the homeless preference units to individuals recommended through a loose and non-binding relationship, and I would focus on the non-binding. I think that there are no guarantees, there are no contracts. There are loose memorandums of understandings with these social service providers, and I don't have any issue with the social service providers. I just don't understand the relationship that they've established with Valley CDC and what kind of accountability there is. They are recommending the tenants themselves, and I think this really opens it up to bias. Who are they selecting? What is the criteria? Is it universal? Do they select people that they are managing because it works for their schedule, their services, you know? Will other people be left behind? They are only providing nine to 12 months of services, and I don't think that this is adequate for the needs of this population. They are entitled to services for the duration of their stay at the facility. The best practices that are recommended by HUD calls for universal, uh, criteria, and then they do a needs assessment upon, you know, the tenant selection, after tenant selection process. Then they'll do a needs assessment and then link them to services, provide the services. This seems backwards to me. And then the requirements of providing social, um, sorry, um, the preferred placement plan. I find it hard to understand how this is acceptable in, um, permanent supportive housing. They have received $7.5 million in a supportive housing plan, so this is not just, you know, a housing plan. Their building is beautifully designed. My husband told me I would get no support for asking it to be less pretty. But I think that with $7.5 million, I would love to see them put that back into their services for their tenants. The other issue I have is that they're saying, you know, um, Valley CDC made a point last week during the ZB meeting that the homeless population wouldn't necessarily be the chronically homeless, that we're talking about people who are, are just temporarily unable to find housing. HUD is very specific about their definition of homeless. It is people who are in a place uninhabitable for human, um, habitation for a year, and it can be a year with some interrupted periods, but they're very, very specific about that. The chronically homeless are these under that definition with a disability, including a handicap, a physical handicap, mental illness, substance use disorder. So these are the people under the responsibility of Valley CDC. And I don't understand the broadening of this definition to include people who are not technically under this definition. So, you know, are we providing for the most vulnerable or are we broadening it out for some kind of, um, you know, for easier services, people who fit into their financial model? I'm concerned about that, and that's why I would like this independent review. In addition, I just wanted to say that I, um, you know, I'm a public health.
Ms. Lorenz, can we, can you, uh, summarize for us here? We're running a little over time.
Yeah, okay, I'll just, um, I'll just finish up. I just wanted to say that I've been working on the COVID-19 response in the state for the last two months. And one of the things that has been most tragic is watching the vulnerable citizens in the densely populated congregate settings. And I think this whole move towards infill and density of municipal centers will have to be reassessed in light of this pandemic and future pandemics to come. You know, threats of swine flu and other things that are coming. And we just really need to think about public health perspective and coordination with, uh, climate change perspective and what's better for our society. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lorenz. Thank you.
So you're, uh, Mike, uh,
Mr. Giles.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, hi, I'm Mike Giles. I live roughly in the neighborhood of 57 Blue Hills Road. Walk by the property every morning, um, and I think I'm echoing a lot of the things that other folks have said in, in my support of it. You know, homelessness is a very multifaceted problem, as we all know. But one of the very large contributors to it is this nationwide loss of SRO housing. If you kind of do the research, you'll see that that entire tier of housing has largely disappeared in the past few decades, and so, there, and we know in Amherst that housing prices and rental prices are extremely high due to the student population, so, the loss of that really has pushed a lot of people to places, especially single folks, where they just, there is no affordable option for them. So, I fully agree that everything we do comes with some risk. But at the same time, it is really hard for me to see kind of how a proposal could be much better. I did serve on the homeless committee in Amherst for a few years, uh, and have a lot of respect for Valley CDC. They have a very strong track record across a lot of different projects. This location, as someone has highlighted, close to town, close to Route 9. And in addition, the very strong local need of, of residents for this type of housing really does make it hard for me to kind of picture how you could come up with a better package than, than what we're looking at right here. And, you know, I served for a number of years on town meeting, and while that was frustrating at times, I think it did help me to see that the folks in Amherst really do want to live in a compassionate town, uh, that takes care of its citizens and often, you know, really take that much further than other municipalities do. At the same time, you know, I, I see a lot of the same red flags here that we often heard at town meeting where folks who were, you know, directly adjacent to or affected by projects would, would speak out against them. Often, those few kind of passionate voices would instill kind of fear and doubt in enough folks to, to either delay or through delaying ultimately just kill projects. And so I'm really hopeful that we don't let that happen here. Again, I, I really feel like, you know, the Valley CDC has, has really, has an incredible track record across our, our area. Folks who, who want to explore that certainly can. They've got folks we can talk to and questions that can be asked, but, um, I really do think this is a wonderful opportunity for Amherst to kind of take tangible steps towards caring for the neediest members of our community, uh, and hopefully. and hopefully guide a path for other area towns to do the same thing and really help to build a new tier of housing that helps a lot of people find the stability that they need to get out of chronic homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giles.
Melissa? Please state your name and your address.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me? Hi. Hello?
Yep, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me now? I may do this to handle these liability and disability. I'm to choose and communicate to the unit, but the proper equipment, the proper hands, the proper mind, the proper job, the proper address. I can't quite do all. Do you know me? Do you hear me now?
We hear you, but you're breaking up. But if.
I can't really say. Okay, I can't miss the battle I keep up. I can't do anything about that, that I am letting up.
But I can understand what you're saying.
Hey.
Yes, I can understand you.
Listen carefully.
I am.
Listen carefully. I'm not an ass. Okay, I'm a low-income person. The assumption that all low-income people are dangerous that affect community in some negative way is problematic. It's the same problem we have the Black Lives Matter or gender neutrality. We give students an international status, so much opportunity in this community with low incomes. Students, international people come with nothing and thrive. Hurting relief people come here with nothing and thrive. This is America, people. This is America. What are you afraid of? Everyone starts out low income. From the moment you're born, you're debt-free. So don't judge me. I'm 47 years old. I'm an addict. I'm a low-income person. I don't have a car, ride, backpack around. That one is quite change, doesn't it? I'm a BSCA. I care others' situation. Don't judge me because I work on my wage. This is not a for. Behind, image restate. We craft restate. This is a Lincoln restate. Those really flip side. This is about lunch in court. This is about raising rent above the wage so that low-income people can't afford to live in this house. This is about not rich students. On purpose. Deny our income. This was our own come. My K C A law, they need minimum wage. They ask you, would you not tip by? Can I raise red? Look, I have no debt and I'm an addict. You tell me a fucking promise. I have underwrote the ancient security because I hate students. I sign a lease. But my memory back can never forget. Last month, I had one tiger, two tiger, three tigers. Four tigers. In the list. The new name. I'm a citizen. And doing people service, the ones you're talking about, you have the CDC provider. They're already available. Free volunteer, C H D in town. Town of America. Way, way, C D A C. So, C O, servant. All these social services are already invited for. We don't need Valley CDC hovering over us. Doing, but service, do we need? We need guest halls. I'm a professional person. I want to know that when I lay my head down at night, I'm gonna have best friend neighbor interrupting my sleep night because they can't have guests over. They didn't sign the lease, but I signed the lease. I want strong guest policies on a manner on site that is looking at the parking spaces and the guests and who says, you have a lease, you've been pre-singed to be here. If you don't have a lease, you cannot be here. I earned my place on this lot. I earned my place here. I want a strong. I was.
Melissa, can you wrap up your statement? We're running a little over time.
No problem. No problem. In conclusion, I agree. The services that Valley CDC is responsible for are already being provided for by the community. We just need strong leases. We need strong housing agreements. Thank you very much and have any C needs.
Thank you, Melissa. Gary Weiss is next.
Yep. Hi, Jerry.
Hi. Hi, Maureen. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Say your name and your address.
I am Jerry Weiss in District 5, Middle Street in South Amherst.
Go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
Okay, so I am calling in support of the project. I will speak here as the president of the Board of Craig's Doors, the organization that runs the Winter Homeless Shelter at the First Baptist Church. I think most people know that the primary cause of homelessness is lack of affordable housing. Amherst has a longstanding and strong commitment to providing affordable housing, and this project comes as close to, in my mind, a perfect example of affordable housing, as I can imagine. It's somewhat unique, and it actually will be targeting some homeless people for some of the apartments. I just joined in because I couldn't come earlier. But at a public hearing last year, I heard some people speak against the project saying that it wasn't a good plan for homeless people because it would be a long wait until they get in, because it wasn't close to a bus stop, and because it was a half mile from the nearest supermarket. I would say that I doubt any or many of these people have actually spoken to homeless people about their lives. If they had, they would know that the reasons given for objecting to this project are extremely poorly informed about the needs and how living at 132 North Hampton Road would be a blessing rather than unfair. Right now, homeless people are living in tents in woods all around town. It's not the greatest way to live. Tenting is really great for us privileged people who get to go camping. This is the way it is for them all summer until our shelter opens. And I find that this location is nearly perfect. It's not far from downtown. It's really only a half mile, six tenths of a mile. I checked from the Big Y. And as we know, Valley CDC has a very good, if not excellent, track record in running such housing. I hope you will do whatever it takes to agree to permit this project. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
You're welcome.
Next is Elsa Campbell. Can you hear us?
I think I've unmuted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, it's actually Lisa Campbell. Thank you. I live at 27 Pine Grove. And I've been attending meetings for the housing issues now for quite a while for the League of Women Voters. And the League did send in a statement in favor of this project. I just wanted to make a couple of comments similar to something I said a year ago when the town council was having a meeting about this project because I think it's important to remember, this goes along with what Jerry Weiss just said, about the need for this kind of housing and the cost of housing. One of the studies I saw, what, a year ago, said that the average rent, or excuse me, fair market rent for a studio apartment is $1,272. If someone is going to be able to pay that rent on their own, they need to earn it dollars an hour. We have lots of people in Amherst with jobs that do not pay $24 an hour. I think it's really incumbent on those of us who are lucky enough, privileged enough to have stable housing, to be empathetic for those who, for whatever reason, have not succeeded in getting stable housing. And therefore, I really hope that we will permit this project and have it go ahead so it can be providing housing as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell.
Next is, hold on, give me a second.
Susan?
Yes. Hi, Susan.
Hello. I thought the comments, I'm Susan DeGrae. I live at 88 Rolling Green Drive in Amherst. I thought the comments have been excellent. And I really liked the comment by Nate Buttington about the fear of people being single and thinking that, you know, the worst. I think one person in their letter talked about these transient men. You know, just these kind of language and fear mongering is just not right. I also don't particularly, I don't agree with the last speaker. I agree with what the last speaker said about it's much, much worse to be homeless than to struggle around outside in the elements than to have to walk, what is it, a half a mile to the grocery store. I'm sure that people would find a way and they would, you know, pool resources or find a way to get there. One of the opponents had actually mentioned, or someone who thought that the support services should be greater, had actually mentioned maybe there could be a shuttle or something. Maybe something like that would work if there's disabled people who need to get to the store. I just wanted to make a couple of points about, early in the discussion, one of the gentlemen talked about we should only depart from the zoning laws if there's an extraordinary reason. And because it's case by case, I submit that we should because this is, as everyone has said, this is a very well-designed project. Valley CDC is coming in here in good faith as professionals, as experts in the field. And I really have to take issue with people in the comments who have tried to say that they've lied and misrepresented and things like that. If they said something was a bed and breakfast and now the person is not running it. I mean, come on, can we get to the issue here, which is homelessness? And as the last gentleman said, it's very, very serious when you're out there and you're all on your own. I think, I've only lived in Amherst for several years. And I would, full disclosure, I've been a member of the Housing Coalition, Coalition for Affordable Housing in Amherst, which John Horne chairs. When I first learned several years ago that Amherst, when I went to the meetings, Amherst has been quite slow in changing zoning, that it's a lot of single-family homes. And we had a presentation about a project in North Hampton where the idea was to allow, say, someone who's elderly, who has a garage and wants to convert that into housing for someone, you know, one room or whatever it may be. Sound like a great idea, but someone in the meeting, might have been Elisa, I don't recall, had said, well, you know, it's hard to get movement in Amherst. And I've seen that, having been here now for, let's see, three years. So I think that a departure from the zoning rule is certainly warranted, especially since I don't think it would be binding on, you know, another project. It's case by case. Maybe I'm not correct on that. But it's really an issue of addressing a problem and making changes. I remember before I moved up here, I lived in East Long Meadow. And years ago, was the notion of recycling was introduced. And people got up and said, how are we ever going to put our trash in two barrels? It's impossible. We have a large family. And lo and behold, they tried it and it wasn't so bad and it was great. And we reduced, you know, the waste in the town by quite a lot. And it wasn't such a hardship. So when people want to say, you know, that they can't change laws or they're set in concrete, I think that's wrong. We, these are extraordinary times. We have to react nimbly. Finally, I would say that, as the gentleman said, pertain to the homeless and some other speakers, we really have to look at the humanity here. Some of the speakers, with all due respect, I don't think they're considering the humanity of the people who are in these circumstances. They want to really nitpick about this point and that point and really their purpose is to defeat the project. We know that even in the things that have been happening with Black Lives Matter that white people have sometimes, you know, not understood the way that black people have been treated as less than human. And I'm getting a flavor of that in the sense that, as John Horne said, the demonization of these people that you don't even know. They're going to be, you know, a menace. The children are going to be menace. There was mention of there's 20 to 30 children in the neighborhood.
Susan, can you make some concluding remarks here? Thank you.
Yes, so finally, Caroline, don't do that, please. Finally, I think that, you know, there's just, there's not evidence that these people are going to be harmful. I think they'd be very grateful to have the room. I did hear in closing a statistic on the radio that 5% of people were not married and single many years ago. And now it's 25%. I think as Carol pointed out. So, what are you doing? My daughter was trying to point out something else, but that's about it. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? We have no other people that have indicated by raising their hand virtually through the Zoom app that they wish to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? So please raise, raise your hand on the Zoom app. All right. As we said earlier in the meeting, this is not the only way that you, the public, can contribute to the process. You can watch the video on YouTube or on the town website or on Amherst Media. You can contribute your comments through email by writing to the, writing to town. You can view and you can get information about the project on the town website. So this concludes the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. The next item on the agenda is for, is to get responses from the applicant to what the questions that the board submitted at our last meeting on June 25th. And I'd like to ask, I guess it's Ms. Loffler or the Valley Community Development Representative. Is your preference to give a, to review the submissions in response to the board questions from last meeting? Or would you like to talk about some of the comments tonight? What would you, how would you like to proceed? Because we will be taking, we have some time to go over your comments.
The favor with me.
Oh, here's Laura.
Is Laura on?
Great.
Hold on.
Jane, Rachel. Sorry, is Laura up here now? No, oh, Valley. I don't know who Valley is. Valley community, must be Laura. Yep, and then I don't know.
So Tom, we should have Tom Chalmers and Felicity Hardy.
Yep. Tom. Tom, yep.
I might be on as community, as Valley.
So Laura, would you like to, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to describe your, some of your responses to the questions from the board from last meeting?
Sure. I think that we will.
So we have prepared a presentation for you tonight. It will be much of what you got in your packets. But we could run through it with you and see if you have questions. We did the best we could in the couple of days that we had and it wasn't, I'm sure, everything that people would like. So we can have some back and forth about that as well.
What I'd like to do, Laura, is just first, normally I would say do the whole presentation and then we can come back to each individual questions, but these are very, if I, if I'm right, you're going to take each one of the submissions and describe them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Would it make more sense to go through each, to discuss each submission itself individually and have questions? Or do you want to, would you prefer to have the whole presentation presented and then questions at the end?
I think, because it's hard to go back and forth in the PowerPoint. I think people should ask questions as we go along.
Okay. So then what I want you to do then is to indicate when you've completed your description of one. We'll ask questions and we'll move to the next one. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Should I go ahead and share a screen now?
Yes, please.
Okay. How are we doing? People seeing a front page?
Very good.
All right. Just a reminder to folks that there is a real treasure trove of information on the town's website about this project. Cause we have been in a lot of active communication about it for more than a year. And so as time permits, I would encourage the zoning board to go back and read through, especially the project eligibility letter submission. Cause it has some information that is not duplicated in the zoning application. So the format that we used for this presentation is kind of a Q and A. We tried to focus on things that would be visual as being more appropriate for a PowerPoint. There's a lot of verbiage that we also gave you in your packet. So we'll go through. There was a lot of discussion about landscaping. And these were the questions you see here that were asked about the intended plantings. Rachel is going to lead you through. We did a couple of charts that answer some of these questions in terms of the quantity, the size of planting, the maturity, the growth time for all of the different proposed landscaping. And then a couple of slides down, you're going to see a little bit more of a graphic representation of kind of the different plantings in their location. So I'm going to turn it over to Rachel.
Thanks Laura. So I'm going to talk about three different major categories of planting that we're using on site. The first category are the, is in the shade and flowering trees. These are deciduous trees that provide shade, they provide habitat. And some of them flower and provide nuts and berries. There's a range of heights also within, within our selection. Trees like the black tupelo are medium to large sized shade trees of 30 to 50 feet high. And we have a range of growth rates that are slower to faster. Some of them will take 32 years to mature and some of them will mature in eight years. Also, a lot of attention in recent years, the profession has been really evolving to understand better how different plants support ecosystem services of, of pollinators and birds and mammals. And so I referenced Douglas Toleman's recent publication, The Living Landscape, and double-checked all of these trees to see what benefits he lists they provide. So as you'll see in the category under EcoServices, many of the trees that we've selected are supporting local pollinators. In the case, there are some non-native, most of the plantings are native. There are a couple of non-natives. And where I have been able to research when they were introduced, that's also listed in the chart. So there are some trees that are non-native, but they were introduced in the 1870s. Interestingly enough, the, the Norway spruce, which are on the property line, are actually pretty prevalent throughout Amherst. And they were introduced during colonial times. So the black tupelo is a shade tree. It also likes wet environments. We've placed it in the lower part of the site where where things we anticipate being a little bit more, more wet, the soil a little bit more wet. Has lovely, lovely, lovely fall color. It is also well-adapted to southern climates also. So as things heat up, that tree will continue to thrive. It's companion tree, the slump white oak, corpus bicolor, is a larger shade tree. It's up to 60 feet tall. And the oaks by Douglas Toleman really heralds the oaks for being able to support a lot of insects and really provide a lot of services. But they're also just wonderful trees to be under. And they have very smooth lobe leaves. The sycamore tree, Plantus occidentalis, is a native tree. It's very large. I've seen a couple heritage trees in the area. Wonderful peely bark, so even in the winter, it has a presence and beautiful yellow color. The, the sycamores do tend to, on a wet spring, they tend to bloom out later. But just, they're, they're just so wonderful and they have a strong presence and they thrive here. The Japanese tree lilac is actually used by a lot of trees, by the Shade Tree, Public Shade Tree Committee in Amherst. It's one of the street trees. It has, it's not native, but it is really an understory tree that provides a lot of interest, 20 to 30 feet tall. We've also chosen, we have one sugar hackberry on site. It's quite, gets quite large also. And it has, really supports a lot of songbirds and the hackberry moth. And also we're using eastern red bud. It's another native understory tree that buds out and has great color. Okay, next slide. The next category of trees, so those, that's our shade canopy and understory, understory accent trees. The next category are the trees that are going to be providing screening and color throughout the seasons. So when those trees lose their leaves, these trees kind of create more of a structure, a formal structure in the landscape. And we've, in this, in that category, we have a range, one of the challenges with a lot of evergreen trees, like the Norway spruce is on the site, is that over time, they lose the bottom branches due to shading. And so trees that were planted once for a visual screen become open at the bottom where people's sight lenses are. And the, the needles are at the top. So what we're doing is we're employing a mix of heights. So some of these evergreen trees like the blue juniper and the false cypress boulevard and the bird's nest spruce are low evergreen trees that really occupy that six feet to zero level and stay dense and compact in combination with the larger evergreen trees like the Lawson cypress and the white pine and the Pisces loca. So the white pine is a fast-growing evergreen tree. It has these really swoopy needles, which are really lovely to see. And that one will really take a dominant role in the landscape. The weeping white spruce is a little bit more narrow, but it has a different color, a different texture. And the Lawson cypress is it has a nice green foliage. There is some variation out there with different distributors as claiming as to the height of the, of the Lawson cypress. We would make sure that we would get the variety that is the taller one for this case. We also have rain garden area that we're, we're going to plant instead of just using mulch in the rain garden or rocks. We've been experimenting in the firm with using various grasses such as to, to use as a base layer that then we can plant shrubs in so that it stays green, has vegetation and habitat throughout the years. And so I outlined on this chart also which some species of caterpillars that appreciate these types of sedge is also. Okay, next slide. And then the, sort of the mid-height category, the flowering shrubs. And shrubs typically in, in the landscape design and the public landscape, shrubs usually get the short shift. A lot of public landscapes are tall canopy trees, very few evergreens and very few shrubs. In part because it's a maintenance issue and also it's a visibility issue. To really make a space wonderful and feel very homey, it's really helpful to have things at that sort of mid-height, the three to four height range where you can kind of see over them or you feel more, create sense of enclosure in spaces. It also provides more bird habitat and more, more support to those pollinators. And it helps express change in the, in the landscape over the season. Some recent projects are really pushing the boundaries of how shrubs and how the shrub layer could be woven into a public landscape. Like take Loski Park, for example, a lot of the, the heights and plantings there, which are so wonderful to be in, feels like a garden because it's in that scale. And that's something that we're going to be using here. So we've also used a lot of natives and a couple, a couple of non-natives. And I've highlighted which ones are non-native. And again, as I said before, the ones that are non-native, I written out when they were introduced to cultivation in the United States. 1870 is a pretty, pretty great year for cultivated plants. So to talk you through some of those, spring torch heather is enmasing a little bit. And it's been used for centuries in, in New England and in Europe. Clethera omnifolia, summer sweet, has really great white whiskey flowers, which are probably in bloom right about now. Comptonia peregrina, also known as sweet fern, has a really dense texture and it kind of has a spicy smell. So when you walk by it, you're really aware that it's there, the native plant. Red twig dogwood, Tornis bailey, this cornus cerusia bailey is a native plant. It is often seen near wetlands or in wetter sites, but it also can tolerate dry conditions. And it's probably one of my favorite shrubs, mostly because in the winter, that picture, fourth one in on the bottom, the red twigs are really, really prominent in a winter landscape against the snow. But then in the summer has very lush green leaves and white flowers. So it's a plant for all seasons. It also has really soft, so snow can be piled on it, can break and it won't, you know, it won't break. It'll come back and you can also cut it down and it'll grow back in a year. So it's a, it's a winner for the landscape. Father gila is a native. You can see it in the wooded landscapes nearby. And it's great for caterpillars. Witch hazel has those yellow blooms that in the spring. Some hydrangeas, they're, they're, you know, more, more typical in a New England historic landscape. And then Virginia sweet, sweet spire Henry's garnet, which is also blooming right about now. Tolerates wetter sites, which we anticipate here and have really wonderful red leaves in the, in the fall. Ilex glaber shamrock, shamrock inkberry is often used adjacent to parking areas. It has a good salt tolerance and it has these berries, which are, which are delightful for birds. It's evergreen through the seasons and it's pretty, has a dense, compact foliage. Call me a latifolia mountain moral. It's all over the area here in the woods and in everyone's yards. And it's a, it's a staple of the landscape design. It's evergreen and has pink or white flowers in the, in the early summer. Northern bayberry Amherst, it's slovenica, also has a tight, compact form. It's semi-evergreen. I always hoped that it would be evergreen, but it's semi-evergreen. Since the we, we, loses leaves in the, in the winter, but it has wonderful berries and pops out in the spring. And then Brower's beauty pyrrhus is another evergreen, tight, compact one, which is, provides structure in the landscape. That's a summary and detail of the species and kind of the intent of those types. And now I'll talk you through how those are placed in the landscape. And I'm just zooming in on the plans that were already provided. That were, and all of this information is on LC 111. Okay, next one. So I've added colored dots to kind of locate you and tie you back to the plan where these trees are. And I've, there's a couple of different slides that zoom in onto different parts of the site plan. So starting at the eastern border to our adjacent neighbor, where the existing Norway spruces are, we were proposing a range of evergreen trees. Those are the, the blue dots on the plan. So really using a lot of the Pinus strobus, tortoilosa, the white pine with the twisted needles that gets quite high. Where that creates the structure for the new, the new screening fence. At the end, we've added some weeping white spruce. And then we've mixed in a range of the boulevard false cypress, the blue point juniper, the bird's nest spruce and the moss and silver queen. So that provides a really strong formal evergreen structure at multiple heights. In addition, we've added in the sycamore and the hackberry. And then towards the bike shed area, we've added in some of the red twig dogwood and the sweet fern. Next slide. And the area that we're calling the front landscape, it's really the area between the front door of the apartment building and the parking area in North Hampton Road. And this is the area that residents will walk through daily as they go to and from, from the residence. In this area, we've got a lot of things going on. We're dealing with stormwater, so we have a rain garden area right next to the parking area. We also have, we're trying to screen individual units from views of the parking area and create some privacy. So we, we do have units in the, in the lower level. And as Tom had mentioned last week, when you enter the building, you enter at mid-level height. The lobbies are at mid-level between floors and you go either up or down to residents. So for the residents who are living in that ground floor, sort of half, half garden apartment, we wanted to make sure that we're providing screening for them and something soft and lush for them to look at when they're looking out and not looking into the parking area. So we're relying on on some witch hazel, some more of the bird's nest spruce, lots of the red twig dogwood. We're looking at the call me a latifolia. And then we're using a lot of understory trees in that zone also to kind of give more screen and provide spatial interest so that we're using some, some of those guys also, like the Japanese tree lilac. And then as we move further out towards North Hampton Road, we're taking advantage of the street tree and the shade tree relationship that's happening on site. So at North Hampton Road, we have a row of the Nissa Salvatica, the black tupelo trees. And then we also have moving inward to the site, some of the, some of the swampy oak trees. And then we, around the parking area, we're using the dwarf flower gilla, some of the clettra and closer to the, and some idea garnet. As well as in the rain garden area, we're using a mix of carrots, appalachia carrots and blue side oats grass and little blue sn. Okay, next slide. In the southern border, the, the portion of the parcel backing on to Amherst College property, we're using again a structure of the evergreen trees. So again, Pinus strobus is the white pine. Those blue dots are providing the structure. And we're interspersing those with some weeping whites. Just closer to the building, we're relying on the eastern red bud. And then moving between, towards the patio garden area, we're using more of the the sycamore and the, and the quercus white oak. And then we have a couple purple shrub areas in those zones. We're going to use more of the boulevards, false cypress to kind of block views from the patio into Amherst College's property. Those guys will block everything from zero to eight feet. We're also using some, some more of the cornets and some of the We're also using some, some more of the cornets and some of the call me. Excellent. On the western border, adjacent to the parking areas. Using many of the same trees and we've heard comments that there's a desire for more screening. Between the outdoor pavilion and the patio and the parking areas. And so right now, we currently have a deciduous shade border right up against the fence there. With the sycamore and some forest canopy. But what we could do is. Add some more evergreen trees there if, if more shade screening is desired. So that's something that, you know, we can. We can modify if, if that, if that would be of benefit to the town. We, as we move closer to the building, we're using the, the eastern red bud. Kind of created growth that you sit up against and to provide again, more screening between the residents looking out to people that might be in the landscape. We do have some spaces carved out for the, for the garden areas, I mean, open. And then moving towards North Hampton Road, again, we're using more of the big shade trees. This is sylvatica and the swamp white oak. And a couple more of the evergreens. And then closer to the building on the front, we're kind of. Taking reference to more of the historic landscape. So we do have some evergreens as a foundation hanging up against the building. And then we're bringing some hydrangeas in front of there and some of the heather in front of that, some conditional needs and planting. Next slide. Thanks. And then we had a question about would the crab apple tree along the rear property line remain? And yes, we think we can. Before we had prioritized pedestrian circulation around, around the building. At the level of the exits. But I think if we, if we take that away and change the grading, we can, we can protect the tree. And then the question was, what is the common scientific name of the alley of trees along the northeastern property line? And that is Norway spruce, Pisia amii, as well as I said before, that is a, that was something introduced. In colonial times is actually native to Europe and not, not New England.
All right.
I think we're going to leave the, the intense landscaping part of this. So if people have tree shrub planting questions. About what Rachel has presented, I think this would be a good time for those.
Yeah, it'd be a good time for those. And then after, at the end of, when we answer that, we're going to take a five minute break and we'll come back. So. All right. So let's, who has questions about the. Planting plans or the, the landscaping? That we've just covered.
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
The Norway spruce, do you have any idea how deep the roots of those trees go?
I don't know at this time that I can find out.
The only reason I'm asking is there are obviously mature trees. And I know that pine trees, their roots do not go real deep. So they're more prone to falling down. So I was, I was just wondering, I don't know about the spruce and I was just wondering if that's true of spruce as well.
We can find out for you and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Parks.
So it's along those lines with those northern spruce, I'm just wondering if. If there's an assessment of them that they are unsafe trees, that they are, you know, a danger to either property. And if they might fall down, I'd be interested in, in. In the answer to whether they are concerning trees. Though one concern that I'm thinking of for that neighbor who is uphill is if those trees are removed. I think that the lighting for the parking lot and for this new building will be very evident for them. Whereas with those trees there, it would provide screening for a lot of the additional lighting for this property. And so I just wanted to just make that as a note, just for. That property owner to maybe imagine those trees missing and if there was a lighting, lighted parking lot is that it prefer, preferred view for them. And then I'm, I, I'm just wondering what the cost of removing those trees is. I know that we've, I've had trees removed and it's about a thousand dollars a tree. And so I'm just wondering. What you think the cost of removing those trees is? And I'm assuming that you're going to have to do something about the roots or not. So yeah, I, so. That, that's my questions.
This is Laura. We have not done an estimate on the cost of removing the trees. It would be a significant cost. It's not likely to be a thousand dollars a tree because they do them all in a day or two. But it's significant. And then they would have to remove the stumps as well if we're going to plant something in that area. So I am interested actually in the question that was just asked about how deep the roots go. Because in order to make that soil suitable for replanting, you know, what, what level of removal would we have to do to really? Give the new plantings a fighting chance.
Do you know the age of those trees? The Norway pines?
Yeah, you know, your best bet is Barbara, the neighbor, because she remembers, I believe, when they were planted. They were planted by the family that used to own 132 North Hampton Road, I think in the belief that they were on their property. So.
And I guess, do you have an answer to Ms. Parks' first question, which was the. Stability or the potential dangerousness of the.
Yeah.
Of those trees?
We do not, you know. It's not unusual that we would have either the tree warden or an arborist come on site to evaluate trees because. We can tell maybe not all of these trees are perfectly healthy trees. So it's definitely something, if there was a contemplation of saving them. We would want to assess their condition. If they're being removed, then it's kind of a moot point what their condition is. So it really is kind of a fork in the road for us. So we do not know their condition and it would, it would require hiring someone who's got some expertise to evaluate them.
Other questions about landscaping from members of the board?
Just so you know, Chris Brester has raised her again, the planning director.
I can't see her. Great, Chris. Yes.
I just wanted to note that I did speak with Guilford Mooreing, the head of the DPW. And I asked him whether the tree warden would be available to evaluate these trees. And his reaction was that he, the tree warden, his area of jurisdiction doesn't cover these trees. And it would really be better if, if you did feel that they needed to be evaluated, that you had an independent evaluation of them. Rather than having a town employee evaluate them.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Brester.
I conversed with the tree warden prior about this row of trees. And his comment, you know, initially we thought, you know, maybe it's not all or nothing, maybe we could thin them. And he recommended against that because as they grow, the branches kind of interlock. And so they're less likely to topple because they're kind of all holding each other up. So I'm just sharing what little I know about those trees.
Other questions about. Landscaping?
I have one quick question. What's the approximate cost? What are you estimating as the cost of this? It's lovely. It's a lovely plant, looks to me. So I congratulate you. What's the cost of this? It's. And then. What, what do you, how much do you think it's going to cost to maintain these, of the shrubs and all the different. Plantings to keep them looking so nice? Because that's one, that's one of the real attractions of this, of this project.
Sure. So Rachel, do you want to, do you want to take a stab at the cost of the initial planting?
Sure. We haven't, we haven't done that evaluation yet. I mean, that's something that we could provide at the next meeting. And in terms of, in terms of the maintenance. I think for the initial planting, in the first five to 10 years. It'll be good for the tree maintenance, just to keep an eye on where the limbs are coming in. And that, there's an opportunity to really think about views in and also what's being screened by those branches. So that's something that in those initial years of growth, Valley CVC can really cultivate what feels more open. So a shade tree that's tall with branches that start at six feet high would allow for views through. Versus a shade tree that is left with lower branches, be blocking views. So that's, that's something that. Would be a recommendation to, for maintenance in the early years. A lot of the shrubs can be left, left as, as they are. They're, they're well behaving shrubs. I think, you know, worst case scenario, or even they are only enhanced by, by shaping and trimming. But for the most part, I think these can be left, left to be. I think also initially with the ground plane, anything in the rain garden area and any areas with the planting beds. Every two, every two, maybe every two years, you want to bring in more mulch. And you, every year, every spring, there, a weeding effort is really helpful. If you weed early. You can really get ahead of anything kind of overtaking. So. We, we tend to tell people those first two years after installation, when the plants are really small or on the smaller size and growing. It's really helped, you can really make a lot of headway by, by managing and maintaining it. On other, you know, we could get some quotes for Valley CVC or Valley CVC might help if they do other projects. But we can, we can pull together those numbers also and talk about what that might entail.
So in our management plan, we reference the fact that we do third-party contracting for grounds maintenance. And at a minimum, that includes a spring kind of cleanup, which would probably be the time that we would be fertilizing things or, or pruning things. And it would be a professional landscaper who would do that. And then we do mowing throughout the season. And then we do a fall cleanup as well. So that's kind of the bare bones of, of things that we would be doing. Rachel, can you talk about whether we, you think these would need watering or. Are they pretty drought tolerant and also on a site that has such high groundwater? Whether you think there would be much watering needed?
I, I think, I think long-term watering would not be needed. On sites. Take for example, this, this last, the last two weeks where we've had unseasonably high temperatures without rain. Even, even the places that I've been walking around Amherst that I, that had, have high groundwater, that have soggy ground. I've been seeing things really struggling. So. I think we, we, that, again, that focusing on that first year of establishment is really critical to water. And that will be something that will be in the, in the contract documents and will be on onus of the, of the contractor to maintain that first year. But everything will be watered and really cared for during the first year. Since we are using native species and we have matched the species to the. To the character, the soil conditions of the site, long-term, it should not need irrigation. But it's really, it's really, really keeping an eye on them in that first year, first year or two. To make sure that they get the water so they can put the roots out.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Omira, I see that you have your hand raised. Do you have a question?
I do. Just a clarification on that Norway spruce tree line, if we can get through this. The abutter wants an eight-foot fence. And that's a waiver, I believe, from the ZBA for us to agree upon or not agree upon. Would the abutter still want those trees down if we did not agree on the waiver? And is this not the right time to ask that question?
I think it is the right time to ask the question. I, you know, I, we. I think that question probably is answered by the abutter and. The abutter, I think, has their hand raised in the attendee list, if that's correct. I think I see BGW and if I remember right, I think that is. That is the abutter. We, you know, I know that you can't answer that at Valley Development Corporation. So I think. Ask, go ahead, Marie.
Allow you to talk. Go ahead.
Thanks. This is the first I've heard that the fence would not go up. Those trees have probably about 60 years old, perhaps even a little bit older. Looking online, it says that the Norway spruce has a shallow root. And I can say that yes, it does, because the roots have extended into our yard. Probably going out about, oh, at least five feet in some areas, if not further. It is, I, you know, my husband and I are both 70 years old. And while when we were younger, cleaning up after those trees was less of an issue, now it's becoming more problematic. So. It's, you're, are you suggesting that it's either a fence or those trees? I mean, I. Could you clarify that, please?
I think the question was what, if those trees stay, do you want the fence? If those trees come down. And there's these other plans, do you still want the, and which include, if trees come down, there's a plan for a fence. But we have to provide a waiver for the size of the fence that's being talked about.
Right. I would, we would like a fence, given that we do not want people crossing, you know, cutting across to get to town. I mean, if you're coming out that side door and you need to get to town. The tendency, what is it, the shortest distance between two lines? Or between two spaces, a straight line? We do want a fence along that whole property line. And we want the trees gone because it seems, it will be very difficult to have a fence and have the trees both. How are you going to maintain it? I just, I don't see it.
So, Ms. Omira, does that answer your question that you have?
Sorry. As far as the lights, we are uphill. I don't anticipate that the lights will be an issue. Our bedrooms, sleeping quarters are on the second floor, so we're even higher. I don't anticipate that the lights will be a problem. I appreciate the consideration.
Ms. Omira, does that answer your question? Oh, can't hear you.
All right. I don't think it answers the question. The question was, if we don't agree on an eight-foot fence, do, do they still want those trees down?
So can I just clarify? So we can do a six-foot fence by right, basically. So you're.
Correct.
The difference between the waiver, which is for the extra high fence of eight feet versus six feet. So if the ZBA denies the waiver for the eight-foot fence and we can only put a six-foot fence. Does the neighbor still want the trees to be removed? Is that your question?
Yes.
That's right. I guess it's. You're. Yep, yep. Louder. Then we should move on. Quick response?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry, sorry. I pressed the mute. Sorry, hold on. I think you can talk, wait, where did you go? Sorry, bear with me. Okay, you can talk, Barbara.
Thanks. We would much prefer the eight-foot fence. If a six-foot fence is all that would be allowed, then I guess we don't have much choice. We would still want the trees down.
All right. Thank you. Let's go back to questions from the panel, from the CBA members regarding the. Let's go back to questions from the panel, from the CBA members regarding the landscaping. All right. I had planned to take a break here, but we're almost, we're getting close to the end. So let's, let's just, unless people object, let's just power through this to nine o'clock and go as far as we can. We're already at eight, it's almost 8:30 now, so there's not a lot of benefit to a break.
So shall we roll forward in our presentation?
Let's go to the next.
Okay.
Let's see, we need, we've been through the trees, the eight-foot, and then now we're into the bike storage shed.
Well,
I do know that, I do note that Dylan had his hand up.
Oh, he did. Oh. Mr. Maxfield, where are you? I'm sorry.
Right here.
Go ahead.
So yeah, it's not a question, it's, it's more of a comment. Are we, we had a point of comments, so we hold those, hold those later on.
Comment on the, on the updated landscape plan, yes.
Yeah, comment on, just my opinion on, on those trees before we move forward.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we have, we have the direct abutter, the direct neighbor there, who says that they, you know, they want those trees removed. They want that, that fence put in there. And in other words, we had a little bit of talk of maybe about doing some type of study about those, those trees and the roots. But I, I would say at this point, for, you know, any of the members in CBA to think about, my inclination here is, for that, I'd say remove those trees. They want those down. And then my inclination also was an eight-foot fence. We'd seen what an eight-foot fence would look like there. It, it didn't look, to my mind, like something imposing. So I, I know we keep going back to the discussion about those trees. But like to say, my, my current inclination is, is to go with what the abutter has asked for and the applicant has agreed to. Personally, I, I think it would be a good idea to go that direction.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So we were asked for sections and elevations along the fence line. And just want the ZBT, ZBA to be aware that those are, are kind of tall orders in terms of how much design time it would take, and not typical for the preliminary design phase. And so just to note, my kind of opinion about 40B is the goal is to provide a streamlined, one-stop permitting process through the ZBA that relies upon preliminary plans in order to contain the developer's pre-development costs. This is part of the state's policy to foster and encourage the development of affordable housing. So I, I just would have asked back to the board to think carefully and selectively about how many 3D images you really need to evaluate the project, because it will take time and money to be able to produce those. That's my editorializing. So.
Okay, we understand. That's, I appreciate that. And I think we do as well. We know that they cost. And if these are, as you can see, we spent, we just spent 45 minutes on, or we spent about 20 minutes on trees.
Yeah.
And fences. So maybe, it may be an issue. This may be one of those issues that is important to the board. But, you know, it may not be. We think there's needs for elevation, we will let you know. And if that's a basis of our decision, I think you should know that. And we may ask for it. Okay.
So we've covered some of these. Thankfully, Barbara was willing to be here tonight and could directly represent her views. Question was asked whether we had always intended to take these trees down, and the answer is no, our original plans had them preserved, and they were altered in January 2020 in response to Barbara's request. We're open and willing to save the trees or consider alternates within the project's budget. However, we seek an outcome that is amenable to the immediate abutter. Bike storage shed, we were asked for construction details and dimensions on it, and here they come. This is a look at what we think it would probably look like. Actually, Tom, do you want to take us through these?
Sure. So we were looking at just a very simple structure. We envisioned that, as we discussed last time, and on the drawings, it would be just built on, there'd be no pad, as was shown on the detail in the drawings, but it would be built on sonotubes with the paver, the grass pavers, continuation of the grass pavers beneath them. And it, envisioning just a simple structure, built with locally-milled green hemlock, for instance, and steel connectors. And the dimensions are the same as the dimensions that were on the drawing, I believe. 24 feet long.
I think, I think the height was a
Less than 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you go to the next slide. So the only thing that's really, you know, governing the height is just having enough header and clearance in, at the back and cover. And the bike rack would just be a simple S-shaped rack in the center, running down the center.
And it would accommodate, how many bikes did we say? 21?
Yeah, something like 21.
Okay.
And then there's an outlet shown there, which we, we thought would be important for charging electric bikes. And this is just a floor plan and another elevation with dimensions.
So just a little bit more about the, the bike. You know, obviously, Tom hit the outlet. We are seeing a lot more of our tenants using electric-assist bikes. And in this location, where there is a slope up and a slope down, we thought it would make great sense to provide an easy way for people to charge bikes. Just a, a note, more editorializing, that we also see a lot of our tenants in motorized wheelchairs, which makes it much more manageable to manage the kind of slope that we're looking at on North Hampton Road. I think we're going to move from bike sheds. So if anybody has a bike shed question, this would be the time.
So just really quickly, I thought, at one point, you said there was going to be lighting in the bike shed. Is that actually on your lighting plan? Because it's not on that, it's a picture we just saw.
Yeah, I believe it's on the lighting plan. It's a, it's a fixture mounted under the roof. So it would be basically just shining down onto the bikes. Stop me if you need to.
Any other questions on the bike storage? All right, go ahead.
We had a suggestion that we look at lowering the pole lamps from the 12 feet that was proposed to eight or 10 feet. Our lighting consultant definitely did not encourage eight feet. He thought it would create kind of hotspots right under the lamp and not give a nice broad light over a big area. So we're providing a couple of things. One request was to be able to read the numbers on the plan, the original plan. And honestly, they're still hard to read on my screen. They might be easier in your hard copies. And then this is the, this is the slide that we showed last week of kind of showing the different intensity of light. But all of these light levels are fairly low. And then we're giving you a look at what we could do with 10-foot-high fixtures. And really, the difference is, we need more of them. So instead of up here, you'll see four of the pole lights along the parking area, 1, 2, 3, 4. To get the same kind of coverage, we would just need one additional pole light to get approximately the same kind of lighting for the area. And then we're showing, we gave full-cut sheets of the fixtures to the ZBA. But right here, we're just really giving you a snapshot of what the different fixtures look like, instead of all the technical specifications. As Rachel mentioned last time, they're 3,000 K or less, which means a fairly warm kind of light. These guys over here are solar-powered, everything else is traditional electric. So questions about exterior lighting?
All right. No questions about that?
I have one.
Yeah, Keith?
You show on the plans, you show a pathlight type 2 and type 3. The type 3 is 36 inches high. But on the plot here, I don't see any 3s. Is that correct? You're only using the 2s?
The, the 2s are in the, in the back area, connecting the patio to the pavilion. The 3s are along the path, the main sidewalk, connecting the residence to North Hampton Road. So they have a little bit more, more spread.
So these ones that I'm pointing at now, Rachel, are, are taller than these ones back here.
Could you, I can't read what this says over here, because all of our pictures are there. Can you move our pictures so I can read that?
You can minimize the pictures, too. If you hit the little minus sign, you'll just see yourself. So the, the P3s are, looks like 36 inches tall, and the others are 20 inches tall.
Yeah, okay. I don't, what minus sign do I hit? I don't know. There we go.
Okay.
It says type 2. It says pathway type 2, not 3.
Path type 2. Do we get the next step?
No.
Pathlight type 2 is right here.
Yes. Now look at the other, look at the
Does it say a 2 as well?
That's type 2. That's 2 as well.
Type 2.
Okay. So Rachel, that should be 3, correct?
Yes.
That is an error. Should be 3.
And it looks like the wash is, there was no wash on the, to the boundary with the neighboring property.
Correct. One of our important goals is to not have any light spill over the property line.
So even if the trees weren't, what you're saying is, is this right? That even if the trees weren't there, there's no wash over the, to the bounty of abutting property? You may be able to see the light from the abutting property, because of, depending upon the height, but there's no wash over directly from the light.
Right. So they're all kind of full cutoff lights? And this, I, I don't even think that, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think Dan took into account the fact that there's a big fence and plantings here. This is just almost as if there were nothing. What people tend to see, honestly, are lights on in the building. When there's a, you know, there's nothing you can do to shade those unless people have their shades down.
Okay. Other questions on lighting before we leave this area? It's always a, these are all downcast, and I'm not an expert on, on cut sheets. There are people on this call who are, but these are all downcast, dark, dark sky compliant lighting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And if, and if you are familiar with looking at foot candles, you know, we're in the point 1 to 1, 1 to 2 range, which is pretty, pretty low light.
Yep. Okay. If there's no other questions, move on to supportive services plan. Okay.
So the question was whether the supportive services plan we had already submitted to the town has changed. And the answer is that it has not. And my understanding is that Maureen made hard copies for you folks and distributed them, so that you have those in a format that's easy to read. We sent those plans in with the project eligibility letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development. We got comment back from them that it was a very robust plan. So it, the plan does not become final until it's approved and funding is granted by the Department of Housing and Community Development. They will be giving some resources to pay for the resident services coordinator.
Okay, so, but this is a draft, this is the plan that you submitted to the town.
Yes, and the state.
And so, so, but one thing I would like is not just that the ZBA have a reference of the, of the supportive services plan, but it seems to me we should have the supportive services plan submitted to us as well as something we, we consider in our deliberations. I mean, right now, it's, it, this is a plan that is, that is submitted to another body. And the other body approved it. And it's been, and it has been judged, or you've represented it, it's been judged to be, you know, a robust plan. And one of the things I'd like to do is have this as part of our document. So I would like you to submit this to us and not just reference it as a submission to another government, another Amherst agent, government agency.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. You know, and I would like to spend, I don't want to spend as much time on that today. I think this is a discussion for a lot of, I mean, there's a good discussion on supportive services, I think the board would be interested in. And I don't know that we have time to do that in 20 minutes. I do think it's a, deserves, you know, more discussion. And I think, and I didn't anticipate, I thought we'd have a lot more public comment. I anticipated that we wouldn't get this far. So we'll, we'll have more discussion upon the supportive services plan later. But if anybody has an immediate question they want to ask, we can do it now. But know that we have more discussion on supportive services in the plan that they've proposed at a later meeting.
Right. And also note, we have a summary of the plan within this set of PowerPoints later.
Yep. Yes. Mr. Maxfield?
So if we're, we're asking that the supportive services plan be submitted to us directly, that's part of the, the PEL, correct?
Yeah.
Could, should we just ask that we have the PEL submitted to us in its entirety as a, as a document that we would review? Because I know there's other parts of PEL that I'm sure we'll be discussing later, such as the pro forma, for example.
We could do that. Is there any, I mean, I was going to go piece by piece. But if there's, the whole PEL is, is, I think, a document that went to the town council and to the funding agency. And it seems to me the whole thing should come to, to the, the ZBA.
Right.
Is there any reason not to do it?
In my experience, often towns make it a requirement of the comp permit application.
Yeah. So I think it's a good, I think that's a very good suggestion, Mr. Maxfield. Mr. Parks, Ms. Parks?
I just have one question. In, in some housing, there's a resident who is designated kind of as a, as a manager in case there's any emergency overnight. I don't, in any of your properties, does that happen? Or is that a possibility that someone could be a designated person to take calls in case of an emergency, who then, you know, would be the person to get the service?
Right. I understand your question. We have not used that model. I've talked with other folks who have gone back and forth in terms of that model. Sometimes it's tricky to have a resident, be a resident, and also fulfill a professional function. So no, this has someone who's there daytimes only. There is a 24/7 emergency line that's for property management issues.
Okay. I just wondered if that was something that you might consider. I know in, for some places, they, there's a reduction in the rent to just take on the additional responsibility.
Yeah, and those places, we had a lot of consideration of this during this planning. And I talked to a number of agencies who run programs like that. And they go back and forth. They've had mixed success with that model. So we would like to have someone who can stand a little bit apart, maybe, from the tenants and feel separate a little bit, and has some authority, and also some specialized training. And who doesn't have to meet income guidelines. We're really looking for someone who's a seasoned person in social work to, to be our resident services coordinator.
Okay. I was thinking of it in addition to that, just somebody who would be sort of the on-call overnight. But I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right. So then, I just want to go back and confirm Mr. Maxfield's request. I think that having the entire PEL submitted to the CBA is a good idea. And so we'd like
Okay. So I may ask a clarifying question. It's 373 pages. Is it sufficient to send it digitally rather than copying? Okay.
I think so. I will talk to, I will, I don't want to speak for Maureen and the staff rules. And that's, but I think that probably is sufficient. Maureen, what do you think?
If
Or Chris, either one.
If the board is fine with just receiving electronic copies, by all means.
Yeah. We don't need to cut down any more trees for that, for, for that, right?
But you know, if, if there is, you know, a specific document that, within, within the whole sort of package, if you will, that you feel that, oh, that you realize, oh, maybe it would be nice to have a hard copy, you can let, let us know.
Yep.
But yeah, printing out 300-plus copies for all the board members seems like a lot of paper.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that accommodation. We appreciate that accommodation. A question arose about the distance from the neighboring properties. And I'll let Rachel, Rachel did these calculations. I'll let her talk about what she found. I don't hear you, Rachel, so you might be muted.
You're muted.
Apologies. I used Mass GIS's Oliver online viewer. And I measured from the neighbor's house, the footprint on Oliver, to the property line, which gave us roughly 79 feet. And then if we looked at the measurement of our proposed building, its distance to that same property line, the portion of the building at the, near the storage shed and the dumpster area is 66 feet, a little over 66 feet from the property line. And then as the building gets closer to North Hampton Road, it's further away from the property line. The building's an L shape and it's 90, a little over 90 feet. So that means that those two distances combined, the building footprint, the proposed building footprint is anywhere from 145 feet to 169 feet from the neighbor's house on North Hampton Road. And I will just give a caveat that when we use GIS, when we use Oliver, there's always a little bit of horizontal distortion with both the location of the property line and structures in the site. So this is not a survey, this is from Oliver. And then, so this is the screenshot from Oliver. And I've added the dimensions I described before. So you can see 126 North Hampton Road, Massing footprint in the neighbor. And then our new footprint is in red. An existing building footprint on our site is the beige color at the corner of the footprint. So you can see how far those distances out of.
Thank you.
No questions on building distances? Okay. We were asked for a snow removal plan and specifically to talk about de-icing methods and products. And really, you know, the plowing near plantings was kind of, I think, the concern that folks had. And I'm going to kick it back to Rachel again.
So we have a lot of tools that we can use to manage snow and ice on paved surfaces. And I think as you pointed out, that not all are the best for plantings and actually not all are best for pavement. So the goal of our snow removal plan is to primarily support vehicular access to the property and support emergency vehicle turnaround and access regardless of how much snow has fallen recently. And then removing the material from the paved surfaces for the safety of the residents, staff, and visitors. But in conflict is that our dense shrub plantings, which we know will make this feel more homy and more residential and also help with screening the parking areas from other neighbors and other parts on site. Also, these plantings are helping increase the uptake of stormwater, more so than regular lawn. These are inherently in conflict with snow storage areas.
Yeah.
So the plan that Valley CDC is proposing is to, the contractor that they hire will be instructed to avoid the plantings and only use the designated areas for snow storage. Heavy storms, they're going to have to take the snow off-site. And smaller storms, we push the periphery. And if the grass paved parking areas are not in use by residents after a snowfall, this area can be used for additional storage. And then sand and salt. Sand is used. It doesn't actually help melt salts, snow, or ice, but it does provide traction. But it has limited use. We folks tend to use chemicals to speed up the melting process and help prevent freezing of areas. But there are a number of different sites out there that have a range of impact on plants and paved areas. Sodium chloride is most commonly used. It's why we call it salt. And it's very cost-effective and it's very effective up to 12 degrees Fahrenheit. But it also is very detrimental to plants. And so it is something that we would not want to be using on-site at all. It also can build up into the adjacent soil areas and over a long term can impact plants' ability to take nutrients into their systems. So this would be avoided on-site. Calcium chloride is used in highway de-icing efforts. It's very effective down to negative 25 degrees Fahrenheit. It has minimal impact on plants. There's also urea is another product that is used. And in the industry, in construction, new construction, we often, when we install concrete, require that the grounds and maintenance not use any of the salty materials, but use instead urea. It's a fertilizer, but it's often used for de-icing. And it has less of a negative impact on newly installed concrete, which if concrete goes through too many freeze fall cycles in the first year, it can be prone to spalling. So urea is something that we recommend anyway for newly installed concrete sidewalks for these de-icing in that first year. So that is something that also is beneficial to adjacent plantings. But if it's overused, it can also be a problem. And then calcium-magnesium acetate is another product that might be used on-site. And it's not harmful to plants at all. So what we would like to propose is to give Valley CDC the flexibility to use a combination of these beneficial products with sand and the calcium chloride urea and urea or calcium-magnesium acetate is needed to adjust their plan to what the temperatures are on-site and what the amount of precipitation is and what the issues are that they're encountering.
So your, if I could ask a question, your management plan would then reflect that we store it on-site. If there's too big a, too big a snowstorm, it's removed. So, or if the parking area is needed by the residents, the snow is removed in a big snowstorm. And you're trying to prevent using harmful chemicals to melt snow. You'll use sand and the urea and the calcium-magnesium acetate, I guess, are the chemicals. So the management plan should reflect that that's what you need to do. Okay?
A question was-
Any questions? All right, parking?
Parking. So we were asked for a parking management plan to talk about the needs of tenants, guests, staff, and service providers. And this is what we sent in your packet. The 14 parking spaces, which were kind of originally the total parking spaces that were proposed, closest to the main entry, restricted to cars with a parking sticker for the property, with some signage to indicate these spaces are for resident parking only. Two handicap spaces will be reserved for tenants having a handicap parking sticker or placard. Tenants with a car registered in their name will be issued a parking sticker, allowing them to park on-site. No household will be issued more than one sticker. Regular staff working on-site, Resident Services Coordinator and Property Management will also receive a parking sticker. Cars in designated spaces without a parking sticker will be subject to towing at the car owner's expense. The two parking spaces located farthest from the main entry will be available for visitors and guests who do not have a parking sticker but are visiting a tenant who lives in Amherst Studio Housing. And these spaces will be labeled accordingly. And we do anticipate, I think I've referenced this before, there's a little bit of a flux between the peak time for tenant usage, which we would expect would be overnight and weekends, and when there might be staff on-site, which would be more likely to be during the daytime hours.
So do we have any questions from the board on the parking management plan? You know, I think we, I think we're coming up to the time we get to break for the meeting and the questions. But we need to have comments from public on matters that are not under the, not on the agenda. And we also have to talk about the next time we meet on this subject. So what I propose is that as it's 10 to 9, we have a discussion when we meet and open up the comments to the public for matters not on the agenda tonight. But first, I think we need to move to continue this to another date. And so I'm going to make that motion to move, to continue this hearing to a date. We'll have a discussion about that date after we make the motion. So I move we continue this hearing to a date to be chosen. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Ms. Parks seconds it. Discussion. We, I know Maureen did a doodle pool, a doodle poll, not a toodle tool, a doodle poll. And that poll indicated that the first time we can get the, everybody back together again on a Thursday night is, I think, August 6th. Is that right, Maureen?
Yes. That everyone, correct?
Yep, and because there's one time when we can get people together, but we have a full agenda for other items. So it seems to me that the most reasonable thing we can do is plan for our next hearing on this matter for August 6th. We have a meeting next week on three, we have three items next week, two continued and one new one, I think. Or at least two continued and perhaps the one on, one new one as well.
Yeah, and then we have another meeting scheduled for July 23rd.
Right.
For two special permits.
Two special permits, but we don't have enough people to continue this meeting on that date, so.
Let me look at the poll. Yeah, I don't think that would-
It doesn't work. So I moved it, I would want to amend my motion to have the date be the August 6th, that we continue this meeting to August 6th. Anybody object to that amendment? Hearing done, the motion is amended. Any further discussion?
And that would be at 6:30, just to clarify.
Yep, excuse me, that's right, at 6:30. Any further discussion?
Is that seconded? Oh, Tammy seconded.
Yeah, I, yep. We, we had a friendly amendment to the original proposition. And so now we have the date of the 6th. All in favor, be a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. So the meeting is continued until August 6th at 6:30. The last thing is, I know that the, we had several questions. The staff is going to put together a list of questions that we will submit to you, to the applicant. We also will, at that meeting, and we'll also continue on through the submission that you had tonight. Continue on that. And we may have other items in the meantime that come up when we review the plan and the supportive services. So we'll be back in touch on what we need to have ready for the next meeting.
Okay, great, that'd be very helpful.
Yep, and since the business of the comprehensive permit is complete for this evening, we now open it up to public comment on any topic that is not the subject of the hearing tonight. So attendees from the public?
See here, I don't see any hands raised.
I see no hands raised. We'll give them just a second, but it looks like that's it.
You have a comment?
Not right now.
All right. Okay.
Thank you very much, very much to all the members of the board.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Thank you. So we have to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Thank you again. And we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. We are adjourned. Thank you.